Pretty good lesson learned.
Yeah.
I just hope that they're not too bad on my phone.
You ain't kidding?
Like, I don't want someone to like...
Did you see the pictures we have taken there? They're packed up.
We called this special meeting of St. John's City Council to order this 10th day of July. Tonight we'll be discussing the budget and also have an executive session regarding personnel matters with non-elected personnel of the St. John's Police Department. I think we will start off with that. So I'd like to see a motion for an executive session.
Motion for executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel regarding the police department. 10 minutes to include council chief and attorney.
Okay. Sam? Okay. I got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? 4 to 0. Okay, we will resume back at 8:10. Called this meeting back to order. We're going to go into another executive session regarding personal matters of a non-elected personnel regarding the St. John's Police Department again for another 15, for another 15 minutes. We will resume at 25 after. Do I hear a motion? I hear a second motion. All in favor? 5-0. We resume at 25 after.
I have a question.
Called a regular meeting back to order.
Let me make a motion for another 10-minute executive session. Going to put the same, same matter.
Got a motion on the table. You have a second. Call those in favor? I'm against. 4-1.
Were you 4 last time? Okay.
How long? 10 minutes. Go back into executive session. Resume at 8:35. Called this special meeting back to order. Okay, Jamie, what you got?
A black screen.
Don't talk that much. You don't need me here for this. Really don't want me here for this.
Thank you, Jim. Have a good evening.
Your stuff shut off.
Yeah, it's not turning back on either.
I hear it.
Yeah. I think for the minute before... Okay, so what I sent you in the email earlier, I have made some changes. Melissa had Nikki Drealing go over a few things just because she was so hands-on. She wanted another pair of eyes to come in and look at it. And thankfully, she did. There was a stepless skip with having the library, so we had to go in there and make a few changes. It did allow us to levy just a little bit more money. Overall, everything is balanced. Her biggest recommendations is to look at rates. There's several funds that you can see, I mean, over the three courses that is in front of you, they're depleting with the unencumbered cash beginning January 1st. So that's definitely something that we need to be aware of. I think I might just...
Do we have this in paper, the form in front of us?
Yes. You're looking at the same thing.
This is the same thing that she gave me this morning?
No. The numbers have changed since you got it this morning.
Here, Jim, take these. I got them. Okay.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi. I'm 110. I just, we just started, but I wanted to probably just allow you to... I don't feel comfortable explaining it just yet. If you don't care. I mean, I have a better... I have... Yep. I have you on speaker and everyone's here. Can you... Oh. Are you still... Yep.
You want to go back?
Why are you not talking? If you guys don't care, I'm going to move this this way a little bit. Since I did it without...
Way to ask.
Waiting for an answer.
Way to ask.
Sorry. My phone doesn't want to call out. Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Do you have me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Jamie, did you get everybody a copy of the revision that we did this afternoon?
Yes, I did. I printed out the new one that I PDF'd to you. And I have, I have them on the certificate page right down.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I have them on the certificate page up on the big screen right now.
Okay, got it. And I'm sure you have these on the certificate page. And I'm sure you can press the page 2.
Okay.
So page 2 is actually your computation page. So first thing, how does that allow you to watch that? Okay? Because all, there are other things to increase that were raised.
I must be listening to you now.
Jamie, I didn't know that you don't have that front three page, thank you.
Um, no, I didn't.
Oh, yeah. And then sorry, I don't have that separate part of me. Basically, there's regular pages that's calculated pages, which if you guys don't have your chart, it's Jamie can get that for you. Those two steps, sort of, because it was first page of page 2 that you're looking at. It's actually just the basic calculation for what you're handling. You have to keep that in mind for 36. And the general fund is a different for the manual. So the first page is completed by the resident resident, based on what we presented in January 1st. Maybe you have to...
Is he okay here?
Hey, Melissa?
Can you get her on Skype?
Can I call you on...
Can you get her on Skype, perchance? Where we can see her?
I don't have Skype, do you?
Something, I don't even have my phone.
Can I try calling you on the office phone real quick? We're having...
Oh, are you not trying to call us, Brian, Rob?
No.
Yeah, we can try that.
Okay, I'll call you right back.
Okay.
Do you have to have a jack for that deal? I think Pam has speakers over here. Won't she? You can plug in there?
Yeah, it's right next to my kid. I can barely hear.
For a deaf guy that has to read lips, it's really difficult. You should have enough. We pulled it out there a few times.
Yeah, I'm just making sure nothing's going to come cracking down as I pull.
Hello?
Okay. Is that better for you guys?
That's a little better.
Okay. Volume to you all the way up.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
All the way up, much better.
Okay.
Okay. And then you guys have your original, your regular meeting next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If you need me to, I am available to make it down there next week for your regular meeting, if we need to do that as well. I just wasn't available to make it down there tonight because of some prior obligations. So on the computation page, on page 2, that is where we calculate how much you're allowed the levy without exceeding the tax limit that's in place, okay? So you guys get, last year you levied $381,689, which is line 1 of that page 2. And then what we do on this first page here that you have in front of you, we subtract what was for the library and calculate how much of a levy increase you get because of just levying for the general fund. And we do this in two steps because if you guys decide not to levy for the library this year, we have to take that out and not allow that increase for that. Okay? So basically, what we're allowed to do is levy for an additional $6,943, just because of inflation and what we used within the general fund last year. And that's what the total of 2016 is. Now, the one thing you do not have, and like I said, Jamie can get that printed on for you guys, it's a second page in this computation. It goes through the influx, or excuse me, the inflation adjustments for what was levied for the library, because we also get to increase that levy as well. But the good news is that increase doesn't actually have to be used for the library. It's just for the city in general. Okay? So back on page 1 is a little bit of a summary of where we've got the draft of the budget. And what Jamie and I did, we put a math formula together without doing that increase for you. So right now, we have to, on the first line there, the general fund, spending $990,944 of expenditures from 2019 year, which brings in $366,419 of tax dollars. And then the second fund that you're going to be taxed dollars for in your library fund, giving $28,500 and receiving $22,836 of tax dollars. Now, a lot of you might ask why we're giving $28,500 on the library? That is actually going to be on page 9 of your budget, so let's jump over to that one because that's a little less explanation than going through the general fund. So let's do that one first, on the library, on page 9. We're really only appropriating $26,500 to the library. However, since we've collected some delinquent taxes over the last few years, but we haven't actually been paid out to the library and the money's are still owed to the library since they were levied with the purpose of it. So we built in a little bit of a budget cushion, so then when it comes time to making those appropriations, Jamie and Pam can go ahead and cut those checks for the city and not exceed budget restrictions in the 2019 year. But we're still only levy enough to cover the normal appropriation. Does everybody follow what I'm talking about on that?
I'm getting some head nods.
Question.
Right.
I got a head nod and a question.
Are you thinking...
Okay, what's the question?
On the ad valorem taxes and the assessed evaluation, are we working with an increased assessed evaluation plus an increase in the mill levy also?
That is a very good question. So to talk about the assessed valuation, I'm going to have you skip to page 18 on the budget, which is the budget summary. For the city of St. John, your assessed valuation did in fact increase during the year, but not a huge increase. It only increased approximately $50,000 overall. Last year under that, on page 18, where you can see kind of what I'm explaining...
That's where I read it earlier.
Okay. Yeah. And last year, the final valuation, and I'm not sure what the estimated valuation was at the time of doing the budget for 18, uh, one, but your final valuation came in at just slightly under $6 million. And then this year, it was slightly under $6,500,000 of that. So to get the value of what each mill is worth for you, if you take that assessed valuation and divide it by 1,000, that'll tell you what each mill's worth. So right now, the 2019, Mia Keenan from the clerk has basically estimated a value for each mill $6,047. So for every mill we levy, we're going to get $6,000. So right now, with the way we have the budget drafted, to get the maximum dollars that you're authorized to levy, we're sitting at an approximate 64.371 mils, which you'll see on that very far right-hand column under the estimated tax rate.
Okay. Rhetorical question, Jamie. Just because the assessed valuation goes up every year and we can by statute add an increase in mill levy by 1.2 or 3%, do we have to increase the taxes every year by that amount? Because it's a building tax increase every time. The assessed valuation goes up and therefore the mill levy goes up. It's an inflationary, automatic inflationary part of our budget. Is it necessary?
Is it necessary?
It's actually in two steps with that.
I understand that.
So if, if your mill levy and your assessed valuation goes up, it's actually going, and you levy for the same dollar amount that you levied for last year. So if we levied $50,000 in total last year, and then our mill levy was at 3 mils, and I'm just putting random numbers at this point. And if we were to levy that same $50,000 this year, but our assessed valuation increased, we would actually drop below 3 mils of what we're levying, dollar for dollar, at that point. Which causes you to increase in the number of mils, and it wasn't even a full mill increase, we went from 63.625 to the 64.371, is because of the allowed increase for inflation for the CPI index that the state tax would allow in place. Because the state realizes things are continuing to get, continuing to get in lower expense, so they can't put a true lid on the levy. They have to give you a little bit of adjustment. You know, insurance rates continue to arrive, fuel prices, things like that. So that's why they built in that inflation rate in there for you.
So Melissa, I think he's asking, like, just because the state allows it, do we have to?
You do not have to. We can back off on it. But the thing is, if we back off on that this year, and only levy the $800 that we've had in the past, we certainly can do so. Then next year, all you can do is the inflation rate from what we levy for the 19 budget to what's allowed next year. You can't add back the inflation that we didn't take this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Totally, it makes sense. I totally understand the process. I'm questioning whether it's necessary to always spend more money every year just because we can.
Right. And that is a decision up to you guys at that point. You'll have to make that decision, you know, you guys being in, you know, where you want us to make adjustments on the budget.
Okay, I've said my piece. Well, for the first time.
I was going to say, you're not done yet.
So, and typically, the approach I take, just because it is a, a, a calendar, this budget right now, and just with the tax limit base, you can't top one year and then easily increase the next year, which truly needed because of that tax front. So right now, typically, what I do is flip the city's account chips and tell me that I want to, we drop the budget to maximize the levy, the maximum amount that you're authorized to do without taking it to public books. If you guys want to cut it back, we certainly can do so. There are a few things I'd like to point out, if you've got a few minutes, that we're over some of the specific funds. And then you guys can kind of go line by line and decide if, look, sufficiently enough, there are a few lines in the general fund with, like, wages and things like that, that look like we may have to increases in wages on the, what, the partners requesting versus what we actually split in the town. I don't know if you guys are authorizing those wages increase or not. So you might want to look at those a little bit detailed at the end, and know where, what to cut, how much we want to cut, and where we want to be with the levy. My main area that I would want to focus on, and the ones that actually don't levy tax dollars right now, I mean, looking at some of your utility funds, and let me find the page number here for you.
What page did she say?
She gave it.
That is...
On utility.
Okay. Right. Let's look at your super utility fund, I think, before, you know, yes.
Yeah.
Super utility budget, that's page 13. And it's the minute of the tax of the page. When looking at that, as we're in 2017 action figures, you brought in levy of $78,669. And we spent out of expenditures of $115,880. We're spending that more than what we're bringing in. Now, I do realize that some of those expenditures were actually expenses paid out, and transfers to other funds, such as your capping improvements, your basement fund, and then the general fund. The thing I just want to make sure that you guys are watching on your utility rate, since you're using numbers to sustain the rest of the city's operations as well, to make sure we're charging a high enough rate and putting enough money aside in reserves. And that's one of the areas that I find that, and I'm not saying that you're actually in that situation, just that you're aware of that to watch or study to have pretty good reserves aside depending on your improvement plan for the tour and the water service and something like that. So you're not getting that bind to where you have to go take as much of that out as you have to when you did the nitrate plant project. Because I mean, truly, when did you, like, do that project? Was it five years ago?
2012. About, yeah, about five, six years ago.
Yeah. So, and you guys had to take a substantial loan out for that, and you'll be paying that back for a period of time. So it'd be nice if you can kind of set a little bit of fine each year, just to try, we don't have to do such a huge, tiny, small project in the future. It makes it a little bit easier for you guys, and you'd cut down on, make sure you'd have to pay some of those projects, too. Still, on that same page with, like, 13, or page 13, with the side of waste fund, which is your trash fund, I did notice that you're paying some personal service out of that, which is your regions benefits. Really, what you're doing for your side of waste is trash, so you're contacting that to a third party, is that correct?
Yes.
Normally, I would not see, expect to see wages charged to that fund. It's typically what you have in a situation when all it looks like you're orientated to see what you're charged at that point. Normally, you have your fee, fee to a contractor, and then you're going to charge, like, maybe a thousand or two more for then, that they're taking out just for, or sending things like that to help cover those costs. You usually don't bring in a nut to cover the cost of the...
Cover talk directly into the speaker.
But if you notice, you would have, probably about $9,000 in your cash reserves with the nut back. You started out with $54,000 in the beginning of '17, and you've gone to $45,000. So if you keep on that track and start taking, even though eventually you're not going to have a cash reserve in that fund, to cover the, um, the time gap for when you do it versus to when your customers actually pay it. Because you're always going to have that little bit of gap in the, you know, have trouble with the accounts, maybe not collecting it on a timely passion and things like that. So you might want to watch that, too, and consider not charging tariffs at that point. And maybe just try to add, but assuming that is, I think, Jamie, you told me that that is your utility billing.
Yeah. The billing clerk gets paid 90% out of 4140 and 10%, out of 3601.
Okay. So 90% out of the letter of life. So you might just consider maybe paying 100% out of the, out of the letter of life bank.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why the 10%. I don't, I don't know why it's split, but...
Where does that go and down to?
Just to be considered, just sort of to make it easier in the future, budget line, just keeping line, for whoever's doing the books and processing payroll and things like that. So sometimes the simple method is easier than you're going for you. And that. Really, with, I mean, the letter of life bank, I'm trying to really get back here on that a little bit. Better left each 15. And the main thing I want to add to you about, throughout all three courses of the agenda, we start looking at those terms first. When Jamie left the budget beginning, we were running into a little bit of a tight situation. We were transferring out, it looks like, on average, $170,000 each year from the letter of life to the general fund. It's starting to catch up a little bit, and we're running into a cash flow issue within the letter of life bank. So you'll notice with the 18 year, that transfer in general, capital investment, equipment review, and letter of service, we were right, we just spilled zeros from the 18 year. Now, you still have that budget to be committed in the 18 year. But if we left that, we just transferred it from the budget to your estimates, there's even actually taking your cash to a negative balance in letter of life bank for 18. If we spend everything at the bank, like, it was best to that. So that's not, that's not the thing that we can't transfer anything in 18, is that we just kind of need to watch that and make sure you're leaving enough cash for your school a few months of operation of the letter of life at your end. Then we did, we had a budget to transfer, uh, in '19 into the general fund, and we allowed that with a lot of the budget, the income of cash down to zero for 2019. Just to get you the maximum spending ability in the 2019 year, so that you do actually make some new repairs, you wouldn't have to pay the additional transportation cost in the middle of the budget. So it's not necessarily to say that we're going to spend that out many. I just, I kind of explained to Jamie, on those, that levy forms, in the past, I've done a better just to, just to the budget go down to zero, even though you don't really plan on spending them down to zero.
Jamie, I have a question for you.
Do I have any questions over that process or any objections to that, that I need to kind of guide Jamie in a different direction on it?
You have in your budget, person, personnel services, personnel services? Is that personnel and is that wages?
Correct.
It's misspelled and it's wages. It's personnel, not personal.
Actually, with this data can answer, Jamie was going to...
This is from the state. I did get services.
It's personnel services. Therefore, it's wages.
This is from the state. I did not make this. I just put it in the number.
Well, tell the state they can't spell.
I'll let you talk to one of your senators or something.
Now, that is how the state can, was reform student, who crosses the service.
I just wanted to make sure that...
And necessarily, could just wait until...
Because it definitely makes a difference.
If you're waiting, that your papers and your...
Definitely not.
...have to think like that.
Because it's not just wages. Cause it's not just wages.
Contractual is, what's contractual?
Contractual is going to be like your insurance, your, your stuff like that, the commodities, like I told you before, is...
Commodities or supplies and parts and miscellaneous, whatever, capital outline, I understand, okay. And commodities is what, what you need to make, just supplies or whatever we need, okay, I understand. I was pretty sure it was just a misspelling, I just wanted to clarify.
I'll let you tell the state that they're wrong.
They're going to have a problem. The elected broke back, what do you expect?
See this to the right, does two nine, two thousand nineteen already have the department request in?
Yes, so two thousand nineteen has everything that the department heads requested is in the two thousand and nineteen line item, so you'll see a little bit of difference. Um, we did go through some of eighteen, um, you know, like Melissa said, it's kind of hard to go through and figure out the budget halfway through a year, but what we did was just looked, we've looked at what we've spent so far out of some of those different line items, and we've just kind of judged and, like, if we've spent two thousand dollars and we know that we're going to spend another two thousand, we try to, we've tried to level everything out as much as we can, there's...
If you do it at the same time every year, the same date every year, then you, you have, you're starting and begin, ending at the same...
Right, the, the biggest difficult, like, the biggest part about this that is so difficult is, you know, there's no plan, like, we have all these replacement funds, we have all of these transfers, this going this way and this way, but no one knows why or how or...
How we're going to utilize them.
Correct, or why it's even being done the way it's being done.
So as far as like the big time spending, it'd be good to come up with like a strategic plan to know how to budget better, so as far as machinery and roads and...
Yeah, a strategic plan to be able to start replacing, and Jeff and I have been talking about that.
Well, and one thing that, that's not explained there is on the contractual for um, light production is that we're going into a contract year in January, we're assigned a contract in January, we don't know how much that's going to change for next year.
Right.
The other thing is, is we picked up a business that's probably going to run four or five thousand dollars a month, so we have to figure all those kilowatts in by guess. Now, a year from now, we'll know.
Exactly.
We'll know what they're, what it costs.
That's what the hundred and ten thousand dollar increase is, that was my question.
Yeah, and that, because that's where we pay, that's where we pay our, that's where we pay our Midwest energy bill. So without knowing what the contract's going to do in January, that may change. We don't think if it does, it'll change very little, but still between that and the grocery store, we're kind of at a standstill here as to know really what's happening, cause we don't know, so...
Better there on the safe side, I guess.
And two, if you get stuck in a summer like this where we've had fifteen days of a hundred degree heat, why, we sell more, but it takes more to pay for it too, so, you know, it's kind of one of them guessing by golly deals, really, is what it is, so...
Well, and when we jump in on that, if we need to, we can build in some budget for some of that water and light fund as well, um, so we don't run into that situation if you think we're going to have to purchase a surplus of power with the grocery store running, or with it being a little bit, possibly a warmer summer next year or something. What we could do is put in, that we're going to receive some miscellaneous income, if they're like, if they're, if they're completely leased, and then we can just put a bigger amount in here in miscellaneous expense, right, and for a couple of expenditures, knowing that those, and they'd be the same dollar amount. So we could go in and say a hundred thousand dollars miscellaneous and a hundred thousand dollars miscellaneous expense, they'd wash each other out, but that, they increase your spending authority without having to go and amend the budget later.
Okay, yeah.
That might be what we do.
Yeah.
So we, we could learn that one if you'd like.
I mean, leave the hundred and ten thousand, you got budgeted in there for increase and add in a miscellaneous income.
And then it just, if not, it'll just wash, yeah. Yeah, that might be not a bad idea. I really don't know where, where we're at, um, percentage wise this year compared to last year. I haven't set, I don't figure, you know, where we set this time last year.
Or still what's used.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, until I, and I, and I, Pam got part of the bills to me, but she didn't get all of them, she sent the rest on email, I haven't opened them up yet, so I can kind of go through there and tell and go back from last year, I can kind of tell you about where we're at, so...
But you won't know till next year with the new, with the new grocery store, I mean, that's...
You know, we're going to get a few months this year, but it's going to be cooling off by then too, so...
Right.
I mean, we're going to start picking up some load off that meter probably next week, but it'll just be as they cut it over, I mean, it's not going to be running load, it's just going to be, you know, what it takes inside the building, so it'll be, it'll be a year from now before we really have any kind of a feel as to what's going on, and probably even till September or October to go through one season, so...
Right.
We don't, we don't estimate anything else to really change much, but that will, so...
Any other questions for Melissa? Melissa, I think that we can let you go and they can put me under the hot seat and I'll call you tomorrow.
Yep, that'll be fine, and like I said, if we need to do, with Jamie, I can make whatever revisions you guys have, and get through that process, and have another draft for you at your regular meeting. Uh, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, we have until Thurs- Thursday or Wednesday of next week, to get to the paper to publish on time.
Thursday at noon.
Thursday at noon. So if you guys choose to, um, if you want me called at next council meeting, I'm certainly glad to do so, like I said, I'm available that evening, I can come down and it might be a little bit easier to have some of those discussions with you, and we can make those changes at that time, because Jamie has everything saved on her computer system, so we can easily make those changes that night, and go through that process with me.
Perfect.
So just let, just let Jamie know which way you would record it well, and she'll arrange that with me, okay?
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, you guys have a good evening.
You do the same, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So what did she call that?
Basically just adding in miscellaneous income in the, in the utility.
And then miscellaneous expense on top of...
And then miscellaneous expense, yeah.
And that just increases the availability to, but just because it's budgeted doesn't mean that the, and that's kind of what I've been seeing in some of these funds is, I mean, we have the budget authority, but our cash is obviously depleted every year, so...
Miscellaneous income, which would be...
Jeff, I have a question, we have many in the storm sewer budget to replace storm sewer, we have many in the sewer budget to replace sewer. I don't know if we can buy a hundred feet or a half a mile with what we're setting aside. Do you have any idea what this...
I can tell you on the sanitary sewer, I can't tell you on the storm sewer, because storm sewer is all different sizes, sanitary sewer is eight inch. Um, you know, of course, some of you have seen the tapes that I have upstairs, Jim's seen quite a few of them of the maintenance that needs to be done, the repairs that need to be done, and, and on, um, uh, the sanitary sewer, we need about ten thousand feet of repairs done, and it'll run right at a million dollars. So, a hundred dollar foot, that's about what, by the time that you clean it, you line it, you inspect it, and that, so it comes out of that.
So you largely do it in place, inside too?
Oh, they, they run it from manhole to manhole, yeah.
Inside too.
Yeah, sure, yeah. So, and it's done with a, you know, they do the camera and they, and they check all of it and, and bad breaks and stuff like that, and then they go from there and they put a liner in it, pull it back with a bag, and that's how they repair it. We've got some that are in really bad shape, we've got some that could last a few more years. You know, we jet them as often as we can, but, uh, the clay tile is just in really tough shape.
And you will have, have to hire an outside contractor.
Oh, yeah, there's a guy, there's a guy south of Wichita that's probably as close as anybody that does it right now, and they're, and they're competitive with everybody else in the country, they travel all over the country, they go up to forty-eight inch pipe, you can do the same thing with storm sewer, so, and they do a lot of storm sewer too. That we haven't inspected for two reasons, one, we haven't had the time, it's the wrong time of year to start even looking at it, but we need to jet them and have a camera and look at them. You know, we do have some drainage problems, we know, we've discussed some ways that we could get around some of this, but whether it's damage to the pipe, or whether it's poor design, which we feel, Marshall and I have talked about this quite a bit, we think most of it's probably poor design, the way that it drains back, and the fact that the town is so flat that everything here has to wait until this leaves, you know? So, there's a lot of discussion about who's right and wrong there, but still, um, any kind of a, any kind of a repair of any sort, whether we want to try and put a pond in somewhere and push part of that water the other way and let it set and come back, you know, sixty-four dollar question. But regardless, you know, on eight inch pipe, it's a hundred bucks a foot, on twenty-four inch pipe, it might be two hundred and fifty, I don't know, so... And we have to have a third party do the camera stuff, because we don't have it, I mean, so...
So as of right now, we have no transfers going out of water and light fund? Like you cut them last year, if I remember right as well.
Yeah, we did. Which makes me a little nervous, because I know Jeff talks like, do we really need those transfers, but then, on the other side of things, Ladonna and Pam have always said, like, that's what, I mean, the general fund makes no money.
Yeah, that's what builds a general fund, basically.
So that's one of the things that has left me pretty nervous, just because of, and that's not saying that's wrong, that's just my gut feeling, because that's what I was told, whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but you know, you're...
I know last year we had to do it just for the simple fact that we spent money that should have come out of, I believe, the capital outlet instead of our cash flow for the meters.
Well, it should have been done on a long-term basis, sure.
Yeah, the meters is...
You know, the fund forty-one that she kept talking about was the water and light fund, and that's where it came from, you know?
Right, and that's what hurt our cash flow.
Instead of being a five-year, a five-year, short-term, you know, whether it had been a GO or whatever we would have done to knock that down.
It would have still been out of the, the capital outlet, would have still been in fund forty-one forty-one, forty-one or whatever.
Yeah, it still would have been out of forty-one, forty-one, two or three.
And I mean, you can see it on there.
Yeah, it took a big night out of it, it really did.
But like with that transfer out, on the general fund, you know, we're going from one point one at the beginning of eighteen, to starting in the beginning of nineteen at six hundred and twenty-four.
Yeah, and it took ten years to build it, it'll take ten years to build it back.
It was a fork state, wasn't it?
Yeah.
What do you mean, Jamie?
Well, in your, in your major budgets, you are planning on transferring water to five hundred and seventy-two thousand.
For nineteen, yes, we took eighteen's out.
For nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we took, we took eight, all of eighteen's transfers out.
Transfers out.
Cause it doesn't seem like it's going to be, oh, it wasn't possible, I mean, it was negative four hundred and some thousand.
Yeah, it wasn't there.
Well, that's about what we were short shy last year was three hundred...
Three seventy-eight or three eighty-eight or something like that, I think, yeah.
Three hundred and eighty thousand shy, which is why we had to cut the transfers last year for eighteen.
Right.
And, and we kind of knew that going in that we may have to do that for at least two years, maybe.
Yeah, three years.
So hopefully it'll just phase itself out with the, but I mean...
I mean, I guess the other thing is, is a person really has to watch their spending for nineteen and hope that there's money left that we could transfer.
Correct. And that's, I mean, that, I mean, I've been voicing that to you guys all along, like, I mean, Pam and I have gone through all of the bills, making sure that everything we're paying, we're actually using, I mean, you guys have been here through the process. I mean, I'm a, I'm a stickler on overtime, like, we don't, we don't do a lot of overtime. If anyone gets overtime, it's usually Jen, because of the, you know, being here so five people coming in and then having to get everything closed down and stuff, but I mean, she's very cautious on that, I mean, it's just...
Well, my guys too, and when they go out, they let me know.
Yeah.
I don't care if it's three in the morning, they let me know, so...
We're doing everything we can to, to cut that, I mean, we don't...
When it comes down to spending, I'd appreciate, like, if they're in a meeting, like, if you see something that we're about to vote on and spend some money, I'd appreciate you to say something, I think it's important.
And that's, that's part of the reason I'd like to get a plan in place, because I don't, I mean, I don't know enough coming into this, like, I'm, I'm learning, so I don't know enough, I would really enjoy it, and it's not just for me, I think it'd be beneficial for the, the community to have that plan, hey, this is what our money's going towards, like, this is our plan, this is what, if we don't do that, I mean, it hasn't been done, and now we have a hundred-year-old sewer that's about to do who knows what, I mean...
Well, we talked about it before you guys came too, that, you know, if we'd set it up on a five-year plan or a ten-year plan, but, but two, if we, if we say we want to spend a hundred thousand a year and take however many feet that we can pay for there, still the money's still got to be coming back into cover, during about three years, we're not going to have any money.
Right.
You know?
And that's something that I am, I'm going to start, Melissa has recommended looking at all of the rates, so I'm going to, I know Jen, she finally showed me an email, she thought I got it, it went to the city's web, the city's email, and sometimes I get them and sometimes I don't, it's kind of weird, but she, uh, they, was it KDHE that just sent out the comparison? So I have that, and I'm going to be going over everything, and Pam brought up, I thought it was kind of a really good idea, like, if we were to have to increase rates, to maybe even do that in a step plan, like, we're going to increase one percent every year for however many years, you know, so it's not a total, we're going to increase rates twenty percent or, you know, not going to...
We'll at least have a town meeting or something, you know, let people know, because without bringing up, especially like the sewer rates, there's no financial money available for us to do anything long-term at all, without getting the rates up, and we're way under it.
They said they're not going to help us if we're not helping ourselves.
Water, we're getting fairly close, but the sewer, we're way behind on, so...
Water, we're about half of the rate on water as any city of our size.
I think it said, I think from that state deal, when we went to that meeting this spring, it was like twenty-seven or twenty-eight dollars was the average bill, and ours is at seventeen forty-five, so we're sixty percent, you know, somewhere close.
And not that I want rate changes, but we also need...
We have to be able to survive though.
Right. So, and the last, I know, I know, when, when we talked about it this afternoon, the last electric rate increase was two thousand and seven.
I mean, I, I was looking up those numbers earlier, and we haven't had a change since two thousand and seven, but I mean, on average for one thousand kilowatts, the average is a hundred and forty-seven dollars, and we're at a hundred and thirty-four, it was like comparing the average was with fourteen towns, uh, or something of the base rate, what is it, you call it, or the six dollar?
That's the meter charge.
That is super cheap.
Yeah.
What we're at, I think it's something we need to look into.
Another thing you can do though too is, and not drop it all off on your residential customers, is to look at your commercial customers on, uh, the demand charge, some things like that, where the people that use it and cause your summertime charges to come up are the ones that pay for it. It's like, it's like running a, a two-inch piece of pipe for water and using a garden hose most of the time, but when you need that, rest of that piece of pipe, it has to be there, so, you know, we're set up on that where we slam it one day, uh, in the middle of July, you get to pay for it for twelve months, that's just the way it works. So, you know, on your commercial customers, you know, there's some ways to bargain on some things there that if they want to shut down early and not hit that, just like they do irrigation systems, everything else, we're probably one of the few people in the country that don't have a commercial charge like that at all. I mean, we sell our, we sell our kilowatts to, to the courthouse at the same price we sell them to you, and you, I mean, there's no difference, so, and they're using ten times what you're using, you know, so, um, there's some ways to, there's some ways to do that and not hurt your residential customers too bad, and still let the people that are using it pay for it, so...
I think we need to look into it, just...
And Greg and I talked about that last winter, we just haven't got back together at all, he had some ideas that, that he wanted to bring to you guys too.
I think that'd be a good idea to go ahead and bring some of those ideas to council.
I'll give him a call and have him put something together.
Yeah.
It might be thirty days before he gets here, you know, but I'll, I'll give him all of it.
And that's definitely, since she had suggested that, I know we've talked about it, but I want to get the budget taken care of before we dive too far into that. I have Jen, she, the other day asked if I needed her to do anything. So I said, yes, I do, so she, in her in-between time, I think has started looking at that, so...
Well, because I was going through our expenditures on administration, we used five, you know, since two thousand and seven, fire has almost doubled. since two-thousand-and-seven, fire has almost doubled.
Since two-thousand-and-seven?
Seventeen, I mean, you know, police went up thirty percent, fire almost doubled, streets up one-hundred-and-fifty percent. You know, if you look at the increased expenditures, someplace we may need to cut some of those expenditures.
I imagine those street expenditures went up, because this is the first time in ten or twelve years we bought asphalt.
And, and that, that may be where it is, as in you buy commodities.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And that's what I-
We've stayed under what the budget was, but that's probably where it increased, although it was-
When I've been back and looked at the street, it was-
But we also, you know, we bought some equipment on that too, I mean, we bought a skid stool, we bought a planer.
But the biggest difference is-
The biggest difference was in commodities, I believe, and that would be materials.
Materials, yeah, so it would probably be asphalt and oil.
All this, two-thousand-and-seventeen is your actual expenses though.
Exactly.
And, and what's budget is, is your maximum budget, what you think you're gonna be spending, so that leaves root, right. And eighteen is a little bit more adjusted to actual, but six months into it, you don't know, but your nineteen, most of those numbers are a little bit higher on all, like, on all of the funds, I mean, that's just-
I mean, you're just looking, just take a look at police, it's a third of your expenditures in your proposed budget on one budget, I think, one-third.
Right.
Seriously? That's, that, that raises my eyebrows, seriously?
You guys set the rules.
I mean, if it comes down, I mean, if, if it's there, don't mean we need to spend it.
Exactly.
No.
But I mean, we have control over, when it comes down to big purchase like a vehicle and such, I mean, I think the chief had been planning on buying a vehicle or something, wasn't that?
He, yeah, he budgeted, he budgets, um, money to go back to have money for new vehicles, because of the Larry Terry, when you're in a vehicle in town, the stop and go and stop and go is worse than highway miles, I guess, right?
Does he say one year O P M?
Your acronym?
Here, you want this?
My acronym is-
I wrote this a little, it's your copy.
It's easy to spend money when it's O P M, that's other people's money.
Yeah. You might want this so you can study it.
You can have it away pretty quickly.
She's damn right, dude, what the fuck's going on?
Mayor, you might want this so you can study it, I can always give you another copy, so.
I wasn't in here, I didn't do that. Any other hot seat questions?
I thought you did a good job.
I mean-
I went through every page, this you gave me.
And I, I mean, I really focused on, I took, you know, after, after I got a little bit more of an understanding of how it all worked, really, you just, you put in what was spent in seventeen, and you look at what they budgeted for, which, I mean, I had a little bit to do with what was done in eighteen, but, you know, it's just those questions of, why is this money here? Why are we moving this here? Why is, you know, in the, oh, is it general fund, um, at the eight C, there, in the general fund, there's a capital project street and a capital project other, you know, there was really large amounts in both of those line items, and Melissa asked me, well, why are these here? And I don't know, I don't know. So that's where I think, you know, not saying that we're gonna have turnover, but for the purposes of, you know, my situation, I mean, we're all brand-new, we have no idea of what's going on, we do now, because we're starting this, but it would be nice to have that plan in there, just in case something were to happen and turnover did occur, there would be more of a plan in place of, hey, this is, this is our plan, this is, this is the vision, this is what's happening. And I think that would be very beneficial, not only for the whole entire community, but business-wise, as the city. I mean, it, strategic planning is a lot of work, but I'm willing to, and I actually took a leadership class that can do strategic plan, I can remember seven years ago.
Something that-
Let me pull my notebooks out.
Something I wanted to see about is, I contacted a council member and staffer, they were tearing down a house, they had hired a stone to tear down a two-story house, and I was just curious, and I called them, I got ahold of the clerk, and basically, what they do is they have a, a budgeted amount, I think it's between thirteen to twenty thousand dollars they do a year, and with that money is what they use to tear down houses, I mean, I think it's something we should look into.
We do the same thing, and it rolls over each year, I believe.
Right, and I think there's like a-
I think, yeah, I think we'd have something in there.
It was ten thousand dollars this year, this was seventeen, I believe, if I recall, from right through this budget.
I think that's right.
Actually, I think we projected the same towards, maybe I think we're right on that.
Yeah, because that wasn't the-
Yeah.
You may have increased it.
The non-departmental rate.
I don't remember if we increased it or not, but.
I think we increased it, it was either-
I think we increased it last year, definitely.
I thought it was fair, may have been, maybe if I recall.
So I mean, as far as that money goes, I mean, because they're tearing down garages for like fifty dollars, and they're doing like whole houses for, I think, two-hundred or something, I mean, it's super cheap, and I was just wondering like, why we can't do that, to start cleaning the town up better.
Or conceivably are told as we could.
Yeah, he told us he could, then he told us he couldn't.
Yeah, but that's what I'm wondering, like, we, I think we need to check into it, and I just, now while we have the budget out, I mean, I'm just curious on if we should put money in there, I don't know.
And we do have, for eighteen, we budgeted ten thousand, and so for nineteen, I kept it at the ten thousand. And, and that's really-
I think we started out at six thousand, because that's what it cost us on the one house, and tearing down the six thousand dollars.
And then I think we upped it for eighteen, is that what it would've been?
Then we changed it, bumped it on up to ten thousand to help build it up, so we had the money set.
If you drive through town, or, I'll, I'll bring you photos one of these days, and you just look at the houses, old churches that used to burn, some of them had people living there.
Here, here's my problem with that, like, our first round, you know, I started that project with Bobby, and, I mean, we got somewhere with it, we did, but what we're running into is, we're not qualified, the health department's not qualified to say, this structure is not sound. So until we have someone qualified to come in here and start telling us, yes, this structure shouldn't be standing, no, it's not livable, I mean, the health department can take the health aspect of it, but until we bring someone in that is qualified to make those calls, we can't do anything.
But it's not just that that I'm looking at, like, up there, there's people that know that they have a really bad-looking place that can't afford to take it down, and they come to the city.
Yeah.
And that's something I'd like to look into, but we need to be reasonable, but staffers are obviously losing money.
Right.
And I, I might have been losing money.
We don't have people walking out our door saying, we wanna tear down our houses, I mean, I mean, it's been an issue just-
I mean, we could talk, we could talk-
The thing is, when you do that though, eventually, that money's got to come from somewhere else, the expense does, it'll have to come out of somebody's budget.
You know, and that's why I'm wondering, like, I don't know how to do this whole deal with figuring out if it's gonna come out of that fund to pay for our fuel or-
Yeah.
Our guys or what, but I mean-
I mean, you ruin a tire or two, you know?
I think if you, I think if you look at the structures in town, I don't think a million dollars will cover it, some ones that need to come down.
No, I'm pretty sure it won't.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm bringing it up.
We're also tearing down all of these houses, and nothing's going out.
I'm just bringing it up now, just in case we need to budget something, because I think we need to get something going.
In most cases, the problem with taking those down is also a big building to back on. Not according to the way the zoning sits now, with that some revisions, and we end up mowing more lots, and, you know, and they end up on the tax roll, and it's just a vicious cycle.
Well, most of the houses that we're taking down had families living in them when I moved to town-
Oh, yeah, sure.
Twenty years ago.
Sure, yeah.
They, they would be, probably my parents' generation that lived in them, their kids went off to college, never came back, they died, and the houses are immense.
Yeah.
Well, just bringing it up now, I mean, if we need to figure something out for budgeting, guys, I think we, we can talk about it at the next meeting, this whole deal, I think a plan, but I mean, something for financing, I mean, right now, while we can, so that way we can start taking care of something in the winter, maybe.
I'm not too sure there aren't some people outside that would help fund that too, you know? There's some, probably some people that would like to have some stuff cleaned up, that maybe would wanna do it anonymously, but still, there are, you know, we got an offer from somebody to take down the corner store, so, you know, if it works, it's great, it's great, so. Yeah, I'm all with you, the more we clean up, the better. Sure is.
When do we have to approve this, or are we-
Tuesday, well, I have to have a toothpaste by Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Are you going to have us a different, or you wanna be tweaking this anymore between that? So we just need to get off and study it.
The only thing you, the only thing that so far you guys have talked about changing is the hundred thousand dollars on the water light to cushion for the maybe electricity that we might need.
Which, I mean, you could leave the hundred and ten thousand in there, but figure out another number for the miscellaneous thing.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
If we can do the, the hundred thousand in the, in these on both spots, and that ends up working out, I'll put that in there. But I haven't, unless I'm missing something, I haven't heard any other changes.
Really, well, I see.
I think through the winter, then we say, we do a strategic plan on what we want to start doing in the spring.
And I, I'm, I plan on sitting down a little bit more to get a better understanding of where, you know, like, where our wages are coming from, where, because, whose was it? I think, I think it's Dale, wherever Dale gets paid out of-
He gets paid out of sewer.
Out of sewer, so if you would look at the sewer fund, is that the one, is that one of the ones that are wacky?
Forty-oh-one is what it is.
The sewer utility, so. Is it sewer utility?
Yeah, he gets paid out of sewer.
I think I might change the numbers.
They ought to be paid at parks.
Yeah, we had different numbers in there, and the ones I sent to you this morning, I think, and then we increased those, because in seventeen, we had actually spent forty-two thousand, and I think we had in there like thirty-something, and I'm not sure what, that's what I was worried about, I think I voiced that to some of you, I'm worried that, you know, we're not even budgeting the, you know, like, just even the building insurance, you know, we have another, what, ten to fifteen thousand dollars this year to figure out where the power plant's gonna go, and that's, I mean, that was not on the budget.
Wasn't even on the list, so.
So, you know, it's just-
So it costs us an extra ten or fifteen thousand on insurance?
Well, I'm sure it will, yeah, it wasn't even insured.
Okay, parks, I noticed someone asked, do we spend our parks budget?
We put ten thousand in there for some trees, we've got some dead trees, but I mean, other than that.
The special parks? Or in the general fund?
I don't remember where it was now, because I-
Because we have, we have special parks, and then we have-
Then we have parks.
Park in the general fund.
Yeah.
And your special parks is basically gonna be like your alcohol sales tax rate?
I think that's right, yeah.
Which can only be spent for parks, so.
Parks, nothing else, yeah.
It might-
Well, we make a, we make a mower payment out of there for one thing.
You're probably seeing parks out of the general fund.
Out of the equipment reserve, but it's basically, it's a park, it's a park expenditure, and, uh, we'll see. We put metal on the scout cabin, I mean, there was, there was some expenses there, you know? And the pool would be, would be, well, it is, but it's not, it's listed under that.
Yeah, and I think, I see, because, see, we have parks salaries, the actual, in seventeen was forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-four, but then we have budgeted fifty-three-seven-hundred, do we only have one person being paid out of parks? That's what I'm saying, I want to kind of narrow that stuff down a little bit more.
I think, I think David gets paid out of parks, and I think Steven gets paid out of streets, I'm not sure. But that would include insurance and stuff too, would it not, Jamie?
Not for the salaries.
No, just personal services, though, yeah.
To pay them out of the department in which they work.
Do what?
Would it not be better to pay them?
Oh, yeah, it's turned upside down three ways right now.
Can we change that, or?
I think we could, I think we should.
And that's part, I don't know if you guys heard Melissa, but, um, like with Jen's, that split with the sewer, or the solid waste, like, for some reason, she paid out ten percent, like, I don't know if we have to have a motion, but I would really like it to be out of one fund.
I think we should-
Not that it's that big of a deal, but-
I think we've got more than one we need to straighten around.
We need to look into-
Well, I think they're, she's the only one that's-
That's split that way.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know why that happened, but is it ten fifteen per, ten fourteen per park?
It was on-
Ten fifteen.
Eight B when you gave me the first one, it was park.
Fifteen.
Salaries had a thirty percent increase, the total overall budget was a fifty percent increase in park. Went through police salaries, twenty-five increased from twenty-seventeen, it looks like, really? Went fire, had a seventy-five percent budget increase from twenty-seventeen. Street, thirteen percent increase, we know where they got there, because we're working on the street.
Yeah.
Park had a fifty percent increase, thirty percent increase in just salaries.
Well, and that number-
But if we're moving people from one department to another.
It was the way they were set up, when, when they put them in from here, so I had no control over it, it came, it came from the clerk, and that was before Jamie.
Came from probably council, though, when they hire someone, they talk about where, where they're hired out.
That's a possibility too.
So maybe we need to get these budgets consolidated to where they are reflective of what we're doing.
I agree.
Wouldn't hurt a thing.
And I think it'll be, you know, if you don't monitor it, you can't, you don't measure it, you can't monitor it.
Because like, like distribution, when I, when I move to this position, then mine comes out of the general fund now, see, it doesn't come out of distribution anymore.
Okay.
So that, it screws stuff up, it really does.
Our, our municipal court, the salary doubled in municipal court.
That was because-
Judge George Moore.
Of the increase of, we increased it because we didn't know what was gonna be happening with, well, not the, the caseload.
But do, what's our revenue out of the district court, municipal court, do we get any money?
Halfway through the year, we've already made, district court, we don't get any money.
I know, but I said, I said, municipal court, municipal.
We've already brought in, in half a year, I wanna say this, but I might be wrong, I wanna say that we have brought in in half a year what we brought in the previous year, and the whole year.
Okay, the, I mean, the whole thing has a twelve-thousand-dollar budget, for expenses, I wondered what our revenue is. Not that I think our court system and our police department should be a revenue source account, but.
And I really do think I could probably look at the salaries under park.
So how do you guys feel about having them look into rearranging the budget for that park, that person out of that department's actually getting paid out of that department? I think that'd be so much easier for the girls, and easier for us to look at when we're looking at hiring people, I think it's just easier.
That's right, it'd be easier for them and understand us to understand, and, 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 as far as they are.
I keep trying to ask if we can start fresh, but everyone tells me I'll, I can't start with, and lose all of the street.
Well, that's, I appreciate that.
There's some guys that split too, you know, half the year, half the year.
I mean, when, when I do, I'm afraid to keep things separated by enterprise.
Right.
However, things cross.
Yeah, sometimes it would just be easier to start fresh, though, because there's so many different things that have happened that I know nothing of, so.
I mean, I think where we run into issues usually is where we don't plan on hiring another guy, so then you get another thirty thousand dollars or something that you need to get out of that bunch, so I think we should, every department had, should really look into if they need to hire somebody or what, but I think that would be real-
And make sure that the budget matches what's there.
So we don't run into issues, and then it gets out of hand in the next few years.
And I think the, because from my sheet that I'm showing, like, for the police salaries, that's for, I think that they had increased that, because when Ladonna was leaving, they were pushing- were pushing raises. And then that also includes a fourth officer. So with the three that we were paying, I was sitting right under, well, a little over a hundred and seventeen thousand. And that's with three employees, that's with paying three, I think. Pretty sure. We don't check that. Seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, yes. So whether we need sixty thousand dollars more with the hundred and eighty-three, I mean, I could probably decrease that as well if I needed to.
Or decrease it.
Do what?
Or decrease it.
I said decrease. But, I mean, I could also take, like, the patrolman one's salary currently and make sure that we had enough for that, just in case the fourth officer was available, and just make sure, just not have that in there as, as high. Or low, or, I can just keep working on this, and we can discuss this next Tuesday. How does that sound? I'm getting some glazed over dyes.
We started four, because we're still here at midnight.
All def, I, because that was some of my concern, was the wages. And then, you know, some of the, some of the wages are, like, everyone in the general fund, all of the extra, like, social security and Medicaid and insurance and stuff like that, that's all out of the general fund, so it's right there. But then you have to be careful on your other funds, you know. That's what hurt us on, on the sewer fund for that employee was they budgeted X amount for insurance, and his insurance was higher, which is not a, a loving fund. And I'm, like, but that was some of my concern, was I wanted to be more precise on the numbers of, hey, we actually know we're spending this amount, why is, why is it not matching? It's just going to take me a little bit, now that I actually understand it, a little bit more with having those few conversations with, like, yesterday, for some reason, it was like a light bulb that clicked. I'm like, oh, hey, I kind of get this now. So, I mean, I'll feel more comfortable playing around a little bit better with some of those. But I do, I started this spreadsheet here to make sure that all of our numbers on, on all of that, but it's still trying to figure out. So we just need to make sure that some of those things that we know we're actually spending is reflected there in the budget. So I'll keep working on some of those, and I'll just keep emailing you as I make the decisions, and we'll have a final draft for Tuesday.
Thank you, Dan. Great, I really did.
And then we'll, we'll sit down and get a, a rate.
I'll get hold of Greg, and then we'll see about the rest. And we'll find somebody to get help. I got a couple of guys I contacted that might help us.
Yeah. And whatever, I think it was Kenny H G, whatever they sent to Jen was, it seemed very helpful. So I'm pretty excited to look at that, because it's not something I'm going to have to go and research. It's all right there, so. We'll get there.
Good. It's good for me.
I think we just have to get over the meter, meter jump.
You have to deal with that one.
I was going to say hump, but.
You said you did not know how many, if we, our kilowatt usage was increasing, you don't have to get the numbers in.
I have the numbers, I just haven't sat down and dealt.
You have to stretch them.
I'll try and, I'll try and get to that. I, we're trying to get this wired up out there so we can throw the switches on this transformer this week to help those guys. So we've kind of been locked in out there. But hopefully, after tomorrow, I'll have a couple of days here where I can sit down in the afternoon and do that, because I need to spend some time with Jamie anyway, so. I'll try and have those for you Tuesday.
What, are you going to let Melissa know? She, she was wanting to know whether she's, you know, Tuesday or not, or any of those things.
I mean, if we're going to start, I won't change a lot, but we're going to move a lot of numbers around for the employee deal.
Well, but I don't think you'll have time to do that by next Tuesday. I mean, that's something that they do inside, and it's not going to affect the budget really.
Oh.
I mean, they can do that after the fact.
Shift.
Right. Shifting things around.
I think we should have Melissa here to answer any questions that we might have.
I mean, if she can make it, yeah.
Yeah, if she can make it. She said she could. She can make time.
Yeah, she said Tuesday she could. Tonight was.
Yeah.
So, and I'll, I'll call her tomorrow and discuss some of these changes and see.
That it?
First, I have to ask a question, because we're simultaneously here. I, I just need to ask a quick question as far as pertaining to the agenda. Is there any way to go back to executive session to discuss the personnel matters regarding that, so I can have an update? Or do I need to call a special meeting for ten o'clock tonight, which is the legal way to do it, because I need to know what's going on?
That's a very good.
Ten minutes ago. I mean, you know, I, I need an update. Or if counsel, if one council member wants to sit back and update me, I don't care about it. I need to know what's going on.
I don't know how.
I don't know the legality of it.
I don't know how your special meeting goes, because what's on there is all you can talk about. Well, if you've already talked about that item, then I would say this is an additional item. But I don't know if that's, if you're able to put that under that one.
John is going to regret giving me his cell phone number.
Well, we need to know. I've already had fifteen phone calls.
All the major departments are going to get too many.
Hi. Dakota's here now, and he's asking if he can go, oh, sorry, it's Jamie.
He's got too many colleagues.
I apologize. Um, so, just a random number from Russell. So Dakota is here now, and he is asking to be updated on the executive session. So can a council member just update him, or do we need, can he go into executive session with full council to discuss that, or how does that work? Okay, okay. That sounds good. I will give them your phone number if that's how they choose to go forward. Right. Oh, so we have to wait till Tuesday. Okay, gotcha. Okay, perfect. I'll get it. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, perfect. Thanks, bye. Turns out he didn't save my cell phone number. Any of you can update him at any time, but we cannot go into executive session.
Okay.
Or you can call John, and he can update you.
Was he here?
Yes.
Good. Well, I have a meeting I'd like you to, if you would, to update me on, it would be kind of like a committee thing, I guess, something.
As long as there's not a quorum, I don't care what you do.
No other business this time. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, yeah.
Motion in a second. We'll see you. Brian, any other discussion? All in favor. Close carries five oh. Meeting is adjourned nine fifty-one.